Okay, here we go. Good evening and welcome to the Exeter Region Cooperative School Board meeting for Tuesday, December 20th, 2022. Will you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will begin with introductions, but before we do, we want to welcome a new member of the school board this evening, Mr. Sawyer Camlin has been elected by the student body to be our new student representative on the school board. So, welcome, Sawyer.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. So, we'll start with introductions with Mr. Dennehy.
Scott Dennehy, Brentwood.
Bill Gothea, Exeter.
Paul Bauer, Vice Chair of the Board from Newfields.
Helen Joyce, Chair from Stratum.
Travis Thompson from Stratum.
And Bob Powell from Kensington.
Sawyer Camlin from Exeter.
Thank you. And our administrators, Dr. Ryan.
David Ryan, Superintendent.
Mike Monahan, Principal at Exeter High School.
Pam Carr, Principal at SST.
Drew Berstow, Principal CMS.
Michelle Votto, Director of Exeter Del Ed.
Thank you.
Molly O'Keefe, Director of Finance.
Rusty Lister, Director of Facilities.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everybody being here this evening. And this is, I just want to take an opportunity here. This is my first in-person meeting of three months of recuperating from knee surgery. And I want to thank my colleagues, both Travis and also Paul Bauer, for taking over for me and facilitating two of the meetings. And the support that I received from my fellow board members and also from the administration, both at the central office and the building administrators was amazing. So, I'm blessed to be working with such amazing colleagues. Thank you so much. So, we'll begin this evening, before we start public input, we do have CMS student recognition tonight. And we're beginning this evening with the robotics state champions. We want to recognize their accomplishments. And I believe Mr. Jim Ropp and Heather Skelly are here this evening. Please feel free, come to the microphone. We want to hear all about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm Jim Oxley, and this is Heather. We're the coaches of the Lego Robotics Team at CMS. And thank you for inviting us here. We've had a great season. It's been a lot of fun and a good experience for all of us. So, as you mentioned, we did really well at the state championship this year. We got the highest score in the state. So, we're really proud of that. The kids really came through. So, this robotics league they're in is an international league, actually. And it's got to start here in New Hampshire. And it's been a really great STEM program that emphasizes sportsmanship and teamwork. So, we've been at CMS for nine years now. We've been coaching for seven of those. And this year, we had eight kids, and then really great kids, or smart ones. So, we practice after school a couple days a week. We get our start in September, and our first tournament's in November. So, it's like two and a half months to design, build, program this little robot to do all these tasks on a playing field. So, it's impressive what they can do. And a lot of these kids are really sharp, so they pick it right up. So, you can imagine the different phases that we go through. You know, we start off, all the kids are excited. And there's some distractions. And as things, schools start, and this panic sets in a little bit. But toward the end, there's this determined push to get it all done, and they did. So, at the qualifier event back in November, they actually got the high score there, too. And they got the grand champion award, which is kind of the best in show, which, you know, all the judging categories, they did well in all those. And that got us to the state event, where they got the highest score in the state. And that was our first team to actually do that in the seven years we've been there. So, excuse me. But aside from the awards, you know, the kids had a lot of fun. They've learned a lot. They've become great friends. And we got a lot of support from the parents, too. A lot of volunteered time and resources. There was a friend of the family, you know, expert in the field. And he's a professor from Australia that the kids got to talk to, and they really enjoyed that.
Wow, great.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun for them. And we got a lot of positive feedback from the parents and from the other teams even, how good the kids did, and how determined they were. You know, like the state event, for example, it's an all-day event, kind of run like a sporting event almost. And started off, you know, they did pretty well. They were doing good. Not perfect, some robot problems, but they stuck it out, and they adapted. And the very last run of the day, they stepped up and ran it perfectly, got the high score. They were just totally thrilled. So, it was a lot of fun to see that. And their enthusiasm was kind of, it was showing all day. And they actually got an award for core values, which is, you know, sportsmanship and teamwork and that thing. So, it was great. So, actually, one of the kids, after the judging session, the question-answer period, comes out and says, "That was a lot of fun answering all those questions. I didn't realize I learned so much."
Oh, my gosh.
Us as coaches are like, "Oof, love to hear that."
That's great.
So, thank you for your time and support at CMS. It's been a great season for us, and looking forward to the next one.
Well, thank you for your dedication. Did you want to say anything, Heather? No, you're going to be, okay.
[laughing]
Does the board have any questions for Jim and Heather at all, or anything that they'd like to ask?
That's great.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well done.
Thank you.
And you are more than welcome to stay for the full board meeting if you'd like. But if you want to leave, we would not be insulted by that. We always make that little caveat with our guest speakers when they come in. So, thank you. Thank you again. And congratulate your team on our behalf, if you would as well, please. Thank you. All right. All right, we're going to open public input at 7:07. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening?
Liz Faria from Brentwood. I'd just like to note that these are parents, not teachers at CMS.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Good. Thank you for pointing that out. All righty. Anybody else would like to speak? We'll keep public input open until 7:27, and then we'll have another 10 minutes at the end of the board meeting. So, our first agenda item is the approval of the minutes from, public minutes from November 15th of 2022. I just had a couple of minor corrections. In the minutes, I was listed under the, with the group of administrators rather than school board. So, if they could move me back to school board, my days of administration ended a long time ago. So, I admire our administrators every day of the week, believe me. And the only other change, it's nothing major, but there was a misspelling under 12.1, Ian Taggart. I had read a thank you note from him. He was one of the recipients of our scholarship that was presented last June at graduation. And his last name is spelled T-A-G-G-A-R-T, not D. I just wanted that for the record. So, that was my only correction on the minutes. Are there any others? Yes.
Thank you, Helen.
Paul, certainly.
On section 10.1, which is my report out on the facilities meeting, there's an instance where Mr. Lister's last name is spelled incorrectly. It should be L-Y-S-T-E-R. It's listed as L-I-S-T-E-R in the minutes. So, have that fixed.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Travis?
Thank you, Helen. So, it's not related to 7.1.3, but it's at the bottom of that page. Dr. Ryan is talking about the debt for school lunches. It says that Dr. Ryan mentioned that schools are starting to see a decrease in the debt. As we will be discussing later, I think that should be an increase in the debt.
Correct.
Yes.
I think we had said you were going to pay for that debt.
[laughing]
Going to the hospital, but we discussed earlier.
That's right.
I apologize.
All right. Great. Any other corrections? Omissions? Seeing that, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Travis. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor, please signify by raising your hands and saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. All right. Great. The next set of minutes are the November 15th minutes, non-public minutes from that same evening. Are there any omissions or changes, corrections, et cetera? All right then. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So moved.
Bob, thank you. A second?
A second.
Scott?
Or Scott.
Thank you. All right, or Scott. Okay, there we go. All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Raise your hands.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. All right. Great. Thank you so much. Our favorite part of the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just had a quick question. Liz Faria from Brentwood, again. Who's taking the minutes tonight?
We have a, we have a member of the faculty taking the minutes. They watched the video, and they take the minutes from the video.
Oh, it's from afar?
Yes. Yes. And I have to tell you, I just commented to Dr. Ryan, those minutes were exceptional. They were really well done. So, commending her for her
I will pass that along.
Her hard work. Please do. Yeah, they were excellent. Thank you. All right. Sorry, Liz. I didn't see you come to the microphone. Okay. I have to keep my eye open for that. No, that's a good question. No, thank you. All right. Okay, so we're going to begin our student reports, and we'll begin with our, our student rep on the board, Sawyer, if you would like to share what's going on at the high school, please.
Thank you. Yeah, as always, we've been pretty busy. December 1st, we started off December with the Exeter Festival of Trees. We called it a Santa's Block Party, where high school students and high school senate members all went down and volunteered, helping kids build gingerbread houses and help decorate them. We also helped just running the lines down there and smaller fundraisers like that. It was a good success. The kids were having fun, and the high school students were having fun as well. We also just partnered with Seacoast Youth Advocates and helped build a community fridge. So, that's at the YMCA, where community members can leave or take ready-to-eat meals. It's just a great way for the community to help one another. Tomorrow, at our senate meeting in the morning that we have, we will be producing, hopefully, around 100 peanut butter and jellies for the fridge to be made and put before the holidays. Today, we just presented our goals for Winter Carnival at the faculty meeting. We really are hoping to reduce the amount of waste, increase participation, and getting more clubs involved for Winter Carnival. So, Winter Carnival starts the second week of February, and then the actual festivities begin the last week of February. Right now, we're currently in the process for voting for the theme for Winter Carnival. Right now, seasons, so that'd be spring, fall, winter, and summer, are in the lead, and they're very closely followed by the Boston sports teams. We're super excited for this year's Winter Carnival. It's going to be the first official Winter Carnival back from COVID, where the whole school can be together. So, that's always exciting. And then just some upcoming events we have is the New Hampshire Southern District Student Council Conference, which is hosted by Timber Lane in the end of January. And I know everyone is extremely excited for that.
Thank you, Sawyer. Very complete and detailed. Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for Sawyer?
That's great.
All right. Thank you again. And we have from CMS, Evelyn Nab and Evelyn Johnston.
Hi, yeah, Evelyn Nab is here.
All right. So, Evelyn Johnston is here. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, school board members. As we come close to holiday break, our school has gotten a lot busier. So, later this week, the sixth graders are lucky to be able to go ice skating as part of a field trip. This will take place at Exeter Rinks, where students are given the opportunity to skate and bond with friends in a unique way. Because these sixth graders are fairly new to CMS, it is a great experience for them, as they will be meeting new people. Yesterday at 7:00 PM, seventh and eighth grade chorus participants from the middle school had a concert with the Exeter High School Chorus. This included a wide variety of songs, some to highlight the holidays. It was a different, yet exciting chance to be able to sing with older students. Parents and family were invited to attend the performance. So, that was cool. Many of the pods in our school have been collecting donations involving clothing and food to give to charities such as Seacoast Family Promise, St. Vincent DePaul's Pantry, and other organizations. For example, our team was collecting toiletries and clothing items. To encourage students to participate in this cause, we were promised a pajama day, which we received last Friday, when we had success in donating goods. So, after all, it is the giving season. So, this past Sunday, the 2022 World Cup came to a close. To honor this worldwide event, pods were assigned different World Cup teams, who were in the running to take the title. As matches were played and teams lost, pods who were assigned a team that eventually lost were eliminated. And the pod who was named the team that won in the finals were given a small prize out of spirit to the event. It ended in the victory of Pod 9, when they were assigned to Argentina. But our pod, or my pod, was unfortunately assigned to two losing teams.
Oh.
The student council's organizing school-wide Spirit Days to encourage holiday excitement this week. So, yesterday, students were able to participate by wearing their favorite pajamas. And today, they dressed up in their favorite vintage clothes for Decades Day. So, for the remaining days, we'll be centered around specific colors. Tomorrow is Blackout Day for the shortest day of the year. Thursday is White Out Day in hopes of a snow day Friday. But if not, but if not.
I think you're going to get rain. Sorry.
Yeah, I know. I know. I saw that. So, but if not, we will be wearing holiday colors. So, yeah, thank you all for listening, and happy holidays.
Thank you. There's nothing like Pajama Day. It's the best. Does, does the board have any questions for everyone at all, anything at all? Well, thank you so much. You did an excellent job. We really appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, great. All right. And last but not least, we have Kayden Brackett from SST, who's going to report. He's in 12th grade, building constructions. Welcome, Kayden. What school, what high school do you attend?
Hi, I'm here at Exeter.
Excellent. Nice. Great. Okay.
Well, you know, I'm a senior here at Exeter, year two, building construction technology student. I've been mostly doing trades for almost, I'd say going on four, six years, around there. So, yeah, I'm trying to be an extension next year. Again, today, went to the shipyard with Ms. Carr.
Great. Yeah.
Saw a program that I'm interested, so trying to get into that next year. And then over at SCC, we mostly focus on like shop work and getting kids more involved and experience. Like right now, we're at my house doing an extension off my garage.
Really?
Yeah.
That's exciting.
Kids will get to go there three days a week and do hands-on learning and go up on roofs, do siding, roofing, building walls, and all that fun stuff, I guess. And then the other two days, we're in our shop, still learning, but it's bookwork in the beginning. And then we go into our shop, building sheds for customers. So, mostly every day of the week, we are working with our hands and being active, like we like to be. But, you know, and then SST mostly, for me, has helped me grow into, like, I guess you could say a better tradesman. From, I don't know, I've done, learned nothing, to now I've learned electrical, plumbing, heating, and basic construction. And it's helped me decide what I want to do further in life. And Mr. K, my teacher, has helped me a lot with that. And Ms. Carr has helped me extremely, a good amount. So, yeah, and then I just wrote a little thing that SST has changed my life in many ways. It has shown me real life work experiences. I have gotten to meet and work with companies that I'm looking for, that are looking for 18-year-olds to work for them after high school. And then SCC has allowed me to see a new side of myself, a side that I thought I would, I was never going to see. That side was me getting to work hands-on in a classroom, when I didn't have to sit down, take tests, and take notes every day. And then we get to walk around our shop, go to job sites, be outside, and just hang out with your friends, I guess, and still being swinging hammers around, cutting wood. And, you know, going to job sites, just, I guess, like a relief than just going to go sit in a classroom in a chair, when you can go put your tool belt on and, I don't know, carry wood. And, yeah, I don't know, just, people get enjoyment out of it. Like me, I'm a physical learner. I learn by doing. So, helps me out a lot.
Great job. And I have to say that your experience is what many, many, many students need to experience in terms of learning a trade. And financially, you're going to do great. You're going to do great.
Trades is a high demand.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You did an excellent job. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Yes, Bob?
Yeah. Could you tell us a little bit more about your visit to Portsmouth, right? The neighborhood?
So, today, we, I don't know what buildings we did, to be exact.
I'm trying to remember them all, too.
I know we went into the Shipwrights Building, which is the basic construction workers, they, mostly the woodworkers, and they build mostly like a lot of the furniture for the ships. And then, I don't, I don't exactly remember the second one we went to, but then the last one, we went to the electrical side, where we got to see a lot of apprenticeship people working. And if they've been there for like two months, so they're like fresh, they'll mess up. And, you know, just to see like what I could be doing next year, or what other people could be doing. Because some people think it's like, you're just going to go get put on a ship and work. But, no, there's a lot more behind it.
Of course. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kayden? Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate your coming this evening, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. The, as always, too, our students are welcome to stay. But if you, if you need to leave, I'm sure you have plenty of things to do outside of the school board meeting. You're more than welcome to. And have a wonderful holiday. Thank you. Thank you. To you as well. Bye-bye.
I'm up again. I'd like to say that I've had one of those, it's too bad Kayden's leaving, but I've had one of their sheds for about 10 years.
Uh-huh.
And hasn't leaked yet. So, that's pretty good.
Thanks, Liz. Okay.
Better than my shed.
Yeah. All right. Dr. Ryan, you're on. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. And in the spirit of the holidays, I'll be brief. I have three items. One is not on here, but I, I'll get to that as a third.
Sure.
The first is the student board member policy. Can everyone hear me? Liz, can you hear me out of that?
Yeah.
Okay. BBBF, this is a new policy that we did not bring to the SAU Policy Committee because it doesn't apply to elementary students. And so, in consultation with the chair, we opted to bring this policy here. It's in regard to the shift in the law requiring that all school boards having one student school board member from their respective high school. And so, we have revised this policy to ensure that we are in compliance, not only with the law, but with our own policy manual. And I brought it before the board to review and look for action this evening, so that Sawyer can stay. No, I'm kidding.
I just have one question, and actually a couple. But can we close the door? Are we allowed to close the door?
We close just a little. Yeah.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you. Under B, student members will serve one-year terms beginning on the second Wednesday of March in each year. So, when we talked about this, when this first came up, is that per statute, or can we have the elections at the end of the school year, when the other elections are going on? I know Mike and I had chatted about that. It seems kind of, it would be difficult to be running another election in March. But if that's via statute, then, you know, clearly, we have to comply with that. Can we, can we have the term beginning the first school board meeting in the fall? So that when the young, when the kids are running for their prospective titles, whether that be president, you know, et cetera, for all of the classes, run that election at the same time?
So, the first question, is it part of statute for the term? No, it's not.
Okay.
The board can choose
Okay.
what the term will be. The reason we recommended this was so that every time the board changes
Right.
that includes the new student board member.
I see.
So, the onboarding that takes place in March in the organizational meeting
Okay.
would include the new student member as well.
I see.
However, that, that, there's nothing etched in stone about that. It's just a recommendation we made to coincide with the election cycle.
Gotcha.
I briefly consulted with Mr. Monahan. He thought that made sense. But I don't think he's, I don't think he would oppose to
Well, let's hear from Sawyer. What, what?
Yeah, I mean
Thank you. Thank you, David.
I wouldn't oppose against that. I know that'd be definitely a little bit easier for senate to manage an election that's not with all the class officers.
Okay. All right.
We'd have to do both. But it's
Gotcha.
It wouldn't be a hassle to do that. I just think it'd be, it won't get as clogged up, and people can really like know what they're voting for.
I understand. All right. Good.
I would recommend March, but
Yeah, I only raised it because it had been brought up earlier as a possibility. So, I just want to make sure everybody was on the same page. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What if it's a senior who gets elected in March?
So, that unfortunately would disqualify a senior from running.
Right. Right. Okay.
No, I just wanted to make that clear.
Gotcha.
Yep.
The other point that I wanted to make, under letter D, student member expectations on number three, present to the school board specific proposals and ideas from the high school student body, which I think is wonderful. The only thing is that normally, via protocol, you would begin with the building principal to run that by, to make sure that it's feasible. And I just wanted to throw that in there to, you know, to just determine whether or not we need to specify that, or is that necessary, do you think?
So, I had a great onboarding meeting with Sawyer. We talked about the difference between operational and governance activities. I think as a student body representative, he has a very keen understanding on those items that should be brought before the board, and those items that shouldn't. I think, and Sawyer, you're in the room, so I'm not going to talk like you're not here. But he has a good relationship with Mr. Monahan. I think we're establishing a pretty good working relationship. That if he has a question, he could ask one of the two of us.
Okay, great.
And we'd be able to provide some, some direction.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or concerns about? Yes, Paul?
Yes, one question I had. The proposed policy indicates that the student member will attend all school board meetings. I was wondering how that applies to committees? Do we want the student board member to, to be assigned to committees, or depending on their preference, or can they float? I just didn't know if there's anything in the law with regard to committees, or if the policy envisions anything, or if we're just kind of going to play it loose and let them go where they want to go, where they want to learn more?
There's nothing in the law about committees. What assigning the student board representative to a committee will do will and will not create a quorum. So, he'd be a fifth member. However, without voting authority, it's not under the law a quorum.
Okay.
So, it's just something for us to, to recognize. I think that's going to be up to the board, how the board wants to, to ask him to use his time, or her time, if our next board rep is a female student. The, I think Sawyer's expressed interest in attending those committees that he's interested in.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a feeling either way. I think, it's a good question.
Yeah, no, it is a good question. Sawyer and I had a conversation when we had a phone orientation, so to speak, when he was first elected. And I believe, if I recall, I had indicated to Sawyer that to be assigned to a committee and be required to be at a committee for a student, that's, that's a hefty amount of additional time, given their other school responsibilities. And my recommendation to him at the time was, if he'll get the agendas for all of the committee meetings, just as we get them. And so, if there's a committee agenda that he's interested in, or an item on the agenda that he's interested in, my recommendation was to let him attend whichever committee meetings he would uh, my recommendation was to let him attend whichever committee meetings he would like to and, and leave it open. And if he's not free on any given evening because of final exams or whatever the case may be, because, um, you know, we're kind of feeling our way with this. So as long as, as by statute, uh, he's not required to be at committee meetings, that would be my recommendation.
I'd certainly agree, Helen. I mean, I think it would be best to allow the students to go where their interests lie, given that they're not voting members. They don't affect, you know, whether there's a quorum or not. Um, it makes the most sense for them to just be able to decide based on the agendas and on their personal availability as well.
Okay. Any other questions about the policy or concerns? Does this require a second reading? It say, cause I'm, I just noticed it said first reading. I mean, is this something we can adopt tonight or does?
You can adopt it tonight. The protocol that we've worked on through the policy committee is first readings for all policies.
Mm-hmm.
I think given the circumstances, the, um, unless there's a argument from the policy committee representative, oh, Mr. Gothier.
No, there's no argument.
Okay, great. All right, then. Well, unless there's further discussion, I will accept a, a motion to adopt student board members' policy BBBF this evening?
So moved.
Thank you. Travis, do we have a second? Bill, thank you very much. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? You're on board, sir.
He stays.
Yay, all right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Christine Hodgson from, um, CMS, she's our art teacher. She brought forward a research proposal for her dissertation, which I had expressed support for and admired its thoroughness and, um, its transparency. And so I've asked her to attend again this evening, um, in that the board had asked to, you know, spend, be able to spend a little time reviewing it uh, as with the consent forms and the other associated materials. And so, um, tonight would be a great opportunity, I think, for us to, uh, ask for action on that. I, she is present, she can answer questions if there are any and, um, we would look for action because she would like to begin her research next month and it is with the IRB and it's pending this site.
And before we do that, Christine, thank you. Welcome.
Sure.
I just wanted to point out that public input for the first part of our meeting is now ended. We'll have another ten minutes at the end. Thank you. Would you like to speak to it first?
Sure. Um, I'm Christine Hodgson. I teach art over at the middle school and I am currently getting my master's in social emotional learning through National University in California. And part of that program is doing a research, an action research project where we have to focus on, we pick something that we feel like we want to learn more about and kind of do a little more research. So as I mentioned, the last, um, month that I met with you, I'm, my, um, research project is to answer the question is what impact does looking at artwork have on students' critical thinking, um, relationship skills and social awareness? So my plan is to show my students some artwork, some historical pieces and just be asking them some really, um, asking them to look really carefully at the pieces of artwork, like observation-wise. And they should be able to kind of be leading the discussion. Like I'm more of the facilitator role and I'm observing what they are noticing. So their goal is to really do keen observations on the pieces and then obviously come up with the evidence to support what they're thinking about those pieces. And then I will be collecting the data through the survey, so pre and post the research. Um, that's more quantitative data because it's a survey. And then the social awareness and the relationship skills part, that will focus on me, um, asking students to fill out some Post-it notes about like three things they notice about it and two things about like, um, what they're, what they have questions about the piece. And then the last part would be what their feeling is about the piece. Do they like it? You know, what kinds of emotions they feel. Um, so that will be going on, um, the month of January and maybe into February since we're kinda, we're at the end of the, the end of the year. Um, so it'll be like once a week that I ask the students the questions and we have discussions, small group and larger group discussions. And then at the end of the month, I'll, or whenever the research is over, it should be about four weeks' time, um, I will be able to start putting the, the data together and, um, seeing if there was any impact on what, you know, I noticed about the research. So it's kind of a fascinating thing.
It is fascinating. I, I, you, you, your proposal was very extensive and very detailed and we appreciate seeing that.
Sure.
And, um, so I, I'm going to, the other point that I wanted to make was it included parental permission, all of the components that we require as.
Correct.
As a board. So, um, I will open it up for any questions or comments from the board for Christine on this proposal because we'd like to, uh, vote on this this evening. Yes, Paul, then Bill?
I, I would just say thank you so much for providing us with the surveys. We could take a look at those in advance. I thought they were very clear and straightforward and.
Great, thank you.
Sounds fascinating.
Thanks. Yeah, I know, I'm excited about doing it.
Absolutely. Bill, did you?
Yeah, I'm excited for you to do it. I've heard such great things about your classroom.
Thank you.
The students.
Thanks.
So I just, I, 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 I hope that we get to see what the end result is.
For sure.
How are you gonna keep your bias out of this? I mean, that's gonna be an interesting take in just itself.
Yes. So, um, everything that we're doing is coded, like I will use some, um, code analysis. So if I'm going through the data and see certain specific words, it will be like coded under certain themes. And, um, all the student information that I'll be gathering will be completely anonymous. Like the students' names will not be used in the data, um, or in my report. And you all will, like, you know, the program should be done by the end of April. So I will have all that information that I will supply to the parents as well as you all, too. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. I will accept a motion to approve Christine Hodgson's CMS art research project. And we need a second on that as well. Bob?
I so move.
Okay, great. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Okay, Paul, thank you so much. And, uh, any further questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Good luck to you, young lady.
Thanks, I'm excited.
Keep us posted on how it's going. Seriously.
Yeah.
Thank you. That would be great. You are outstanding. Thank you so much.
Oh, thanks. I appreciate it.
We go a ways back here, so.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Christine. All right. Okay. Dr. Ryan, back to you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thanks for that. Uh, Christine, thank you for coming. I appreciate that. Um, I'm passing to you the resume of a nomination that I would like to make. I would like to keep the name anonymous at this point, um, not have it be public because we have not yet nominated this individual. Um, I do have a resignation I need to share with you this evening. This resignation arrived, uh, just a few weeks ago. Um, unfortunately, I'm gonna be asking for you to approve with regrets the resignation of Heather, Heather Mellor, who has been a science teacher, uh, at Exeter High School for sixteen years.
Wow.
Um, and Heather, um, is, uh, requesting to be relieved of her contract and I'm recommending that we approve this effective January fifth of the new year. Um, this is not a surprise to me or Mr. Monahan. Um, we have a system or a mechanism in place to continue moving forward in the science department with, um, classes with the nomination that I've just passed out to you. Um, but before we discuss that, um, I mean, Ms. Mellor's service has been exemplary.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, she's very well regarded in not just, uh, the greater Exeter community, but in the science teaching community. And we just want to wish her the very, very best. And so I would ask for action.
Thank you. I would, uh, ask a member of the board to make a motion to accept Heather Mellor's resignation with regret?
So moved.
Thank you. Travis, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor, please signify by raising your hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Abstentions? None? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now the nomination that I have in front of you, um, is actually one of two candidates who were selected. Uh, this candidate was, um, was above, uh, over and above according to Mr. Monahan and his staff here. Uh, I had the opportunity to meet and spend some time with her, um, with her background, a diverse background, which we're seeing more and more in our, uh, our teachers. She has certainly the requisite qualifications. Uh, some of the experiences that she had, um, she shared would be today. Um, and I'm excited to see her begin. She does have the capacity to begin, um, in early January, so we would not be missing a beat in terms of, of having that classroom with a full-time certified science teacher. Um, and so I'm very comfortable in asking for this nomination to be approved this evening by this board.
All right. Are there any questions regarding the nominee? Yes, Travis?
But your eyes fall straight in line with what's currently allocated for the teacher that.
I believe there'll actually be a savings.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
I have a question. Is there a transition or is this just a, one person leaves, one person comes in? Is there a transition provided there?
Uh, Mr. Monahan, did you want to address that?
Please. Um, somewhat, um, we, we have some coverage going on there, so they'll be around to kind of do a, do sort of, sort of a handoff. Um, this individual actually, um, was a long-term sub in a similar scenario back in two thousand thirteen, believe it or not. So she's familiar with the, uh, the workings of the school. So, um, we're at a really good spot to, um, make this work.
Okay, thank you.
And I might add that she was a long-term sub for the teacher who is resigning.
Oh.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Talk about full circle.
Yeah.
Yeah, really. No kidding. All right, great. Any other questions? All right then. Without mentioning names, I would entertain a motion to accept the nominee for the science position at Exeter High School.
I so move.
Thank you, Bob. Second on that? Scott, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hands, saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce and welcome Rachel Glazier to the Exeter High School Science Faculty. And, um, I believe Mr. Monahan will be making someone very happy this evening, uh, when he sends the approval to her. So thank you for, uh, for getting her that message, Mr. Monahan.
Thank you so much.
Concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. All right, wonderful. We're moving right along here on the principals' reports. We'll begin with Mr. Monahan.
Um, good evening. Um, just a few things I just wanted to highlight. Um, in the world of art, um, we had an award winner, Ariana Jones, a grade eleven student, um, was a third finalist in the Edward Gorey, uh, envelope contest. Edward Gorey is a very stylized artist who does a lot of like greeting card type of things. It's kind of neat stuff. Um, and she was a third finalist for her age group. And interestingly enough, um, her picture will be ha- hanging in the museum of his name in Yarmouth, Mass. I didn't even know there was a museum, so it might be worth a ride to the Cape to see that perhaps. Um, uh, in, on, in music, um, as was mentioned in, uh, the CMS report, we've had a couple of wonderful concerts. Um, last week, uh, the band, uh, yet last night, it was the, uh, choral group, uh, combined with CMS. Um, it was standing room only here last night. I mean, people who showed up like at seven oh five couldn't sit. It was unbelievable. So it was great and, uh, real positive energy. So we're really, really pleased to that. I did want to recognize our, um, our New Hampshire All-State, uh, winners for, uh, for choral, um, Parker Vance, Miranda Sessler, uh, Marley Shabat and Jack Curtis. Those four are New Hampshire All-State, uh, award winners. So that's a, that's a great thing. Um, we also had last month, our Spanish Honor Society did some community outreach in Newfield, set up a Day of the Dead display. Um, got to interact with a lot of elementary school kids. It was kind of a community outreach thing, which was really great to see. And in that vein, um, our English National Lawrence Society brought in a bunch of new members and they, uh, recognized that by writing a bunch of cards, uh, to send out to area hospitals for, uh, get well wishes in the holidays for kids. So a lot of really good community outreach and, uh, Sawyer mentioned that with what the, uh, students are doing. And we had a really good, um, staff meeting today where we got a lot of kids talking to the teachers about how the great the year has gone. So looking forward to a nice, uh, holiday break as well.
Thank you, Mike. I, I wanted to commend, I, I was reading the Hawk Pride report and, um, every department, it's amazing what's going on in these departments. And I was especially taken with two areas. The infographics that Mr. Pettig and Mr. Ward's classes were doing. Um, as a former social studies teacher, it really, uh, impressed me. If, if you haven't had a chance to look at that more carefully, please ta- take a look at it. I was blown away by the work of those students. It was great. And also, I was also pleased to see the, uh, Special Education Career Opportunity Program that they're doing. I think that's really important. So our thanks to you as leader of the school, sir, and, uh, good work. Please pass that along to the teachers, if you would. Thank you. All right. Um, any questions for Mike or any further comments for Mr. Monahan? All right then. Dr. Carr, you're on next. Well, actually, you, you weren't, but I'm gonna put you on next since you're sitting right next to me.
Great, thanks. Thank you. Good evening. Um, I have a few things to, to discuss. Um, first of all, I'll just follow up on Kayden's, um, report, uh, about the visit to Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. Today was the second of, of two visits. We had one visit last week. We had just under forty students able to visit the yard, hear from folks who have gone through the apprenticeship program and see the actual places that they would, that there's opportunities for them to, um, to apply for apprenticeships. It was really exciting. It's very cool to go on the base because they don't let, you know, you just can't just get in there. So it's, it was a lot of fun. Um, and the, the folks at the yard couldn't have been more nice and really, really so helpful to our students. So I'm excited about the possibilities. They've been working a lot with the, with the folks at the high school as well. So I think we're gonna have some really great, um, opportunities for our, for our community. Um, so that was really exciting. Um, we also have been in discussions with Exeter Hospital about having our LNA clinicals being held at Exeter Hospital, which would be very exciting. So we are, um, hoping to completely close the deal on that in the, in the coming weeks. Um, and then in addition to that, our health science students, we also have some student, health science students that instead of doing the LNA program, they do an allied health, um, internship of sorts, more, um, more job shadow, but an extended job shadow. And Exeter Hospital would like to take all of our students for that as well. So we're really excited because of the potential and, and just the, the experience that they can, that they can get at the hospital and, and having it right down the street is helpful as well. So we're, we're excited to partner with them. And then if you, if you haven't ever received an email from our culinary arts department, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the holiday sale that they just had and people will be picking things up on Friday. But one of the pieces that they are offering is a charcuterie board. The, the boards themselves, um, had, were made by our construction, um, students. And we, uh, also had our welding students make a brand, an SST brand, that you heat up and you brand the, the boards. So all of the boards will be branded with SST on them. And so it was just a really fun collaboration between three different programs. Um, and I think just the, the product is just high quality. So I'm really proud of all the work this, the students did to, to make that happen. And so it's exciting. So anybody who got one of the, I think there was only fifteen to have, so if anybody got one, you were lucky and, um, we're excited for you to get them. So that's it for us.
That's truly interdisciplinary, Pam. That's great. And they're so popular these days, too. That's wonderful. Good for them. I, I wanted to also point out, um, and I, and I mention it not only in terms of the involvement of the students, but Sawyer mentioned this, the high school involvement with the Festival of Trees and I sent a photo out of the, uh, the tree. I just want to make sure I had the marketing and digital media arts tree at the festival. Uh, just to let you know that this year's Festival of Trees raised fifty thousand dollars. Um, it was just amazing. We were blown away by the generosity and the support of the community. And for those of you who don't know, the, the, the money that's raised is providing vouchers for needy children and families for warm clothing and bedding in our surrounding towns. So our thanks to you guys for getting involved in that and we, we really appreciate it. And, you know, Kim Meyer and I are on that committee, so I, I wanted to highlight that a little bit. And thank you, Pam, for your leadership as well. Any questions for Dr. Carr? Yes, Bob?
I just wanted to extend thank you to Ann DiMarco and her appearance, twenty-sixth float with the SST in the Exeter Christmas Parade. So thank you.
And another win for, for them, yeah.
Yes, that was great. Paul?
Thank you. Dr. Carr, I just want to commend you on, on the work that you're doing to build relationships, you know, first with, um, the shipyard and now with Exeter Hospital. I, I think it's gonna lead to amazing learning opportunities for our kids and hopefully some great job prospects for them, too, um, as they're heading out from us. Um, so please keep us updated, you know. So, please keep us updated, you know, on, on what kind of opportunities, you know, these, these kids are able to find as far as the apprenticeship at the shipyard. Because I, I really expect it's going to lead to some great things for them.
Good point. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Pam. Appreciate it. Drew, you're on next, sir. CMS.
I think the, the biggest thing I'd like to highlight is, is right now, CMS, we've, I've been spamming a lot of parent email accounts with a request to take a survey. We also have a survey out for our students that are going directly to families for the students that get home, in addition to our staff. And so, we're using this survey to collect information from our stakeholders, so we can learn what we're doing well, what we need to improve in, from all sorts of different perspectives. So, this is a plea to say, please fill that out if you haven't done so yet, because we're really depending on the information to build a plan going forward and make sure our school is as, as good as it can be. Right now, we have about 85% of our staff that have completed it, and families, we have about 30% of families represented, represented, and 15% of our students represented. So, the survey's open until Friday, so we hope you can go on. Takes about 15 minutes to do. And other than that, I just wanted to do the same thing Mr. Monahan did and acknowledge the music department for the concerts we've had this month. It's really been pretty outstanding. And so, Mr. Cobb, Ms. Webster, and Mr. Fisher have done a great job at CMS, really motivating our kids. And they've really turned out and, and put out a, a great handful of shows. And there's still a few more left in January for our orchestra and our sixth grade. So, we're looking forward to that. And I'm going to end there and, and say thanks for listening.
Thank you, Drew. And thank you for your efforts with regard to the needs assessment. Will be interesting to see what the results of that is. Also, I was, I was pleased to see the, the, in your report, the after-school winter activities that they're going to be offering the middle school students, you know, kid, non-traditional sporting events, you know, that the kids will be getting into, a lot of outdoor stuff. I think that's great. So, thank you again for your leadership as well, sir. We appreciate it. Any questions for Drew? Yes, Paul?
Mr. Bearstow, I just want to let you know I completed the survey. For any parents listening, it really is quick. So, so please go in and take care of that. 15 minutes, maybe even less. So, please respond, so Bearstow can stop sending out emails.
That's great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Drew? Thank you. Last but not least, Michelle Voto.
Hello. Good evening. I wanted to first start off by thanking Sawyer and his group for their leadership with the Community Refridge. I know Dan Provost teaches for Adult Ed on Monday evenings, and the Y is right next door. And many of our students are in need that are in our program. And he took a nice field trip over to the Y. And now, we have students that are going over there and eating before they have school in the evening. So, I want to thank you for your leadership and knowing that it's all, we're like this vertical and circular programs, we're all giving to each other, so thank you. I did provide you some chunk of information just in regards to some professional development and curriculum work that we've been doing. We don't normally talk about that, but I thought that was kind of important to share with you. So, we have this, it's called Student Achievement in Reading. It's, it's a STAR program. So, it's a comprehensive reading program. It's a reform initiative for implementing evidence-based reading instruction for intermediate-level learners. And it's so nice to kind of hear what our students are doing. At the middle school, we have this great robotics program and all this great stuff that we're hearing. I wanted you to know that Exeter Adult Ed has the only two nationally-certified STAR trainers in the state of New Hampshire. So, they are implementing STAR training all throughout the state. Those people are Katie Walker and Connie Cullen. And so, we're really excited to have them here at Exeter. And we have many, many of our folks that are actually certified teachers. Betsy Kimball is one. And we have Karen Metz and Sarah Stein that are being trained in that area right now. So, so that's the STAR program. We did actually have a curriculum review project. It's called Standards in Action. It is a, Standards in Action, they are hired federal consultants that have worked with us in reviewing curriculum work. And so, what we did is we did a curriculum walkthrough with one of our ESL material books with the consumer CCRS standards. So, we've been working on that this entire semester. Again, one of our employees, Katie Walker, completed this curriculum review last spring. And Connie Cullen and I were also a part of this training this coming semester. It's a lot of work, but it's great work. So, especially even as an administrator, when you're purchasing books, you're thinking, oh, yeah, you need that book. Let's, let's order that. And then, you're like, well, jeez, is that, it says it's aligned, or is it really aligned? So, again, it really provided some, some great insight. And our, my last thing I wanted to provide you is grant opportunities. I wasn't sure if Dr. Carr was going to bring this up, but I do want to sing the praises of Dr. Carr and her leadership. We do have an opportunity to jointly pair up and apply for $100,000 in grants. It could go to multiple sites. It could go to one site. Who knows? But we are trying to put together a really rock-solid request for, for application. And that's, that's going to be due the second week in January. We're looking to do a vertical alignment with what's currently happening with the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, with, with Adult Ed, and her welding program. And we've kind of, I think we might even have a verbal agreement with Great Bay Community College, with Running Start Credit. So, again, utilizing the facility after the normal school day and increasing opportunities for many more students, including high school students. So, the grant will allow high school students, many times seniors finally realize they want to go into CTE, but it's kind of like, oh, my God, it's too late. It's not too late, not with this program. So, we're looking forward to applying for that grant. And we also have a STAR reading grant that is expected to come within the next four weeks. And I will be applying for that also. So, and we'll keep you abreast on those, that 100K grant for CTE After Dark with Dr. Carr and I.
I love the teamwork. I love the teamwork. This is what we want to see. And thank you for your leadership as well, Michelle.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
And the same to you. Any questions for Michelle? All right. Thank you so much. Yes, sir?
I had one item I neglected to put on my report. We didn't receive the letters yet. There's some, some reason no one's received their letters yet. But Exeter High School has received an additional $15,000 in security grant awards.
Oh, great.
And Drew Rainmaker Bearstow, CMS has received $10,000 in security grant awards. And this was a security grant program to which we applied many of our schools SST, I'm sorry, Pam, and SMS didn't factor into this round of grant opportunities. We suspect that they will be factored into the next round. Our goal is to purchase 15 portable radios and traffic bollards at both EHS and CMS. And for those of you who are wondering what a bollard is, if you go to Target and you see the giant red ball out front.
Oh, right.
It's a concrete structure that is used to prevent vehicles from crashing into a building. Provides an additional layer of security against that type of intrusion. So, we'll have bollards at both schools, as well as additional portable radios.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Any questions for Dr. Ryan on that? All right. Good news. Thank you so much. All righty. I just have a couple of items for the chair's report. We are getting near election time, believe it or not. It seems like the year flies by. And we have filing dates and locations that I want to share with you for the March 2023 Co-op School Board elections. Those who are interested in seeking any of the following positions, we have three positions that will be open on this board, one from Exeter, one from Stratum, and one from East Kingston. Our Co-op Budget Advisory Committee has also three positions opening. And both, these are all three-year positions, by the way. Exeter, Brentwood, and Kensington. That's for the Budget Advisory Committee. So, we also have moderator for our Co-op District. That's a one-year position. So, if there are any members of the public who are interested in filing for School Board or the Budget Advisory Committee or the Co-op Moderator, you must file with the town clerk. There's a change this year. In the past, we have taken those applications at the central office. We have moved that now to the town clerk's office in Exeter, located at 10 Front Street. And the filing period is January the 25th through February the 3rd for filing for those positions. Any questions on any of that? Yes, Bob?
The out-of-town, out-of-Exeter candidates still file in Exeter? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. If it's a Co-op Board position or a Budget Advisory position, they have to come to Exeter to file. The elementary, I believe, still do it in their own town, if I'm not correct. Right. Okay. Great. Any other questions? All right. I just wanted to do a very brief, quick overview of our budget workshop. Two weeks ago, this board met to, this is, I think, the third or fourth year we've done it, right, Dr. Ryan? If I remember, it's the third year?
Year four.
Year four. Right. Okay. Great. Which has been very informative. We met at the Morgan Center, and we, we were there for a couple of hours going over the 24 budget, 23-24 budget. We went through section by section. I want to thank our administrators for being present that night, as well as other administrators in, in our district, answering our questions. We were able to review the budget. We had a couple of questions, suggestions that we made. That included a couple of suggestions with regard to our having two additional warrant articles that hasn't been finalized yet to replenish some of our capital reserve fund and the foot, I shouldn't say football. I keep saying that. Sorry, Bill. The turf on the field. So, that will all be reviewed again at our budget hearing, which will be held in this room on January the 10th. So, I just wanted to share that with you, so that the public knows that we are doing our due diligence in reviewing that budget prior to the hearing. Any questions on any of that? All right then. I'm going to turn it over to Molly O'Keefe before I dismiss the administrators for the finance report, ma'am.
Okay. So, quickly on the safety grants, we did get the letters today.
Oh, fantastic.
So, in your board pack was a current year financial. So, since last month, we did add $322,000. We had some increased expenses due to longevity and stipends. Those are not positioned, so they weren't previously encumbered. We did have success funding substitutes. We had some changes in tuition need, various supplies in various areas. We had to reserve the hockey rink and the pool, and then some maintenance projects that Rusty's working on. And then, the health insurance, that is reviewed every month when people change plans, add or deduct plans. That's a fluid number. So, did anybody have any questions?
Any questions on the budget? I should say on the finance report, excuse me? All right. I believe we have a board member who would like to make a proposal this evening. Shall I turn it over to Bob?
Okay. Yes, I'd like to put before the board a consideration. One of the things that has been going on, if you buy anything right now, you'll realize how expensive everything is. I mean, fill up a tank of oil, it's $1,000. And unfortunately, for some of our students and their families, it's difficult. And one of the areas that the school district can have a say in is school lunch. Some states nearby are paying for school lunch for everyone. And while I considered making a consideration of that, financially, we aren't in a position to be able to do that right now. But there are three categories. There's people that can pay, families that pay for their school lunches for their students. There's people that are paid for because they fall income, income-wise low enough so that the government will pay for their lunch. But there's a group in the middle. It's not a big group, but the group that have reduced fee, you know, they have reduced. I would like the school district to consider paying that, that group of people. In other words, pay the lunch for that group of people, so that those families would get a little break. And it's not a lot of money, but I'll let Molly talk about the finances of that.
Sure. I did hand my paper to Travis before, but.
Do you want me to talk to it real quick?
Or if you want, Travis was going to talk to it during his report. But I did work with Jean Pierce. Now, this would not be any increased cost. It would be a decrease on the revenue side. So, it does not have any impact on the budget we're looking at for next year. On the cost is already assumed in the budget. It would just be assuming less revenue. Now, there are, I believe, I think Travis, correct me if I'm wrong, 60 students. Jean is projecting next year, it's a few less this year, but as, as the economy stands today, we expect a few more next year. So, she's projecting 60 students. The reduced price is 40 cents a lunch. So, if you were to have those 60 students eat every single day for the 180 days, it works out to be like $4,300 for the year.
$4,320.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions about this, Scott?
Is this assuming every year, or are we doing it just this year?
That, that was up for discussion, I would say.
I mean, I, I, I just.
Right. No, it's a good question. It's a very good question, of course. Go ahead, Bob.
I would think it would continue on right now, until the board can come in at any time and take a look at it. But the economy is hurting a lot of people. And I think this is a small response from the school district.
Yes, Scott, go ahead. Please, by all means.
You said 60 students?
Our food service director's projecting about 60 next year. I think she said there was about 52 to 55 right now.
Do we have a historical wise, like, is the average about 50 students?
I'd have to double-check with her. I do think it's a little bit higher right now than typical.
Okay.
Yes, Paul?
In, in terms of what we would be approving tonight, I'm, I'm a little bit uneasy with, with approving this change in perpetuity, simply because we don't know what the numbers will look like going forward. And I think that we need to be responsible for making sure that we understand what we're agreeing to year over year. So, I, I would suggest that, you know, if, if we do end up going to a vote on this, that we maybe just do it for the current academic year, and, you know, maybe we can calendar it or plan to do it at the beginning of the next academic year, when we have some numbers that show that we can make sure we know financially what it is we're agreeing to.
I, I would echo that.
I would, I would agree with that.
I think your, your intentions are accepted here, Bob. We, and I don't, do not disagree with the concept of helping out the families who are on reduced lunch applications. But I am a little hesitant about opening up for future years until we see what our, our financial standing is, and also how many students would be falling in that category. Yes, Paul?
If I could ask a question of Molly, just to make sure that we, you know, again, understand what it is that we're agreeing to and what impact, if any, it would have. The approximately $4,300 of revenue that we would not be getting if, if we were to make this change, is that destined for anything? Is that something that we rely upon for anything in particular?
No. So, the Food Service Fund operates independently from the General Fund. So, in our budget, we do have to appropriate all the funds. But at the end of the year, if the Food Service Fund is in a positive position, it remains in a positive position. It does not go back in the tax rate. If it's in a negative position, then yes, the General Fund does have to fund that up to the, the zero limit, because legally, it can't be in a negative position. The only other part that's a little bit separate is student bad debt, where the students don't pay. That does have to be covered by the general fund regardless. So our food service director is probably the most frugal person I've ever met in my life. And actually, we got in trouble from the auditors for having too much money in the food service fund. So because our food service fund is in, is in the positive, it would remain in the positive, and it wouldn't be returned to the tax rate anyway.
So this change would not put us into the negative, we'd still remain?
We would still remain positive. It would just be $4,300 less positive.
Thank you. Travis?
Yeah, and just so we know, so the, and again, Molly handed me her notes here when we were talking about in finance. So the $4,320 is for a full 180-day year. So if we were to put something in place for the remainder of this academic year, it's like $2,100, $2,200.
Okay, all right. That's good, that's good to know.
Correct. And that would just be a reduction of what already is a positive balance that sits out there.
And then we could revisit it again in the fall?
Yes, I would just ask that we probably do it in the first meeting of the year, because we set revenues in the fall.
Of course.
So we would want to set the revenues appropriately.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks for bringing this up, Bob. Some important things.
Thanks.
It is, thank you, Bob. Very good. All right. So I will entertain a motion to accept Bob's proposal to provide free lunch for those students, families who are, right now, have applied for free, I'm sorry, for reduced lunch, thank you, in the amount of roughly $2,200. $2,200. Do we have a motion? Bob, of course, all right. Do we have a second, Bill? Thank you so much. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hands and saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No abstentions? All right. Thank you so much, Bob.
Thank you.
Our families appreciate you. Thank you. Appreciate everybody, thanks. All right. At this point in time, it's holiday time for you guys, well, not quite yet, but, you know, we'd like to have our administrators leave if they would like, go home and wrap some presents, whatever you need to do. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful holiday next week.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, thank you. All right. Good evening. Okay, we're going to move to our committee reports. Mr. Bauer, facilities?
Thank you, Ms. Joyce. Facilities committee met tonight, and we had three items on the agenda. The first was the Exeter High School, Exeter High School cellphone accessibility issue that we had also talked about last month. Mr. Lister gave us an update there. He has been speaking with Verizon. And basically, what he's determined is that it appears to be a network congestion issue that's, that's causing the difficulty in accessing data and also text messaging at the high school. Essentially, he's learned that there's a prioritization, deprioritization system that the carriers use, whereas, in a nutshell, the more you pay for your plan, the higher priority you get to use data. And what's happening is, service generally is okay in the early morning or in the evening, but as soon as, you know, students arrive and the building is crowded, the campus is crowded, the network congestion issues occur. Apparently, calling is still possible, but the data access and consequently, the text messaging becomes difficult. We understand, you know, some carriers may work better than others, and I'm not going to get into naming carriers and all of that. But basically, based on Mr. Lister's understanding in his conversations with Verizon, it does seem that an elaborate computer system wouldn't really have the intended effect, because that network congestion would still be in place. So one thing we talked about was the possibility of whether having an additional tower in the area may help to alleviate that congestion issue. So Mr. Lister said that he would speak to Verizon about that. But that essentially is where that, that issue is now. The two other agenda items we talked about, one was an update on the Tuck Learning Campus Advisory Group. Bob, myself, Mr. Lister, and Dr. Ryan recently met with Harriman, the architectural company, who was kind of doing drawings of the potential for renovations at the old Tuck building to house the SAU offices. This is very much still in the what-if phase. There's no dollar figure attached to what they put together yet, although they're, they're working on kind of getting a rough estimate together for us. The next steps there would be that the full advisory group will, will meet once again, take a look at the drawings. Hopefully, we have the estimate from Harriman at that point, and we can just have some further discussions about feasibility, whether this is something we can even consider, and, you know, what all of the implications of that would be. And, you know, at some point, we'd, we'd like to have a proposal that we can bring back to this board. I don't expect it to happen quickly after January. This is a complicated thing with a lot of moving pieces, but we did want to give everyone an update as to where, where it is at this stage. And then the last agenda item, just really quickly, on the Blue Hawk House down at the end of the road here, fully operational, students are in there learning, which is fantastic. So things are off and running there. So that was all I had for tonight's meeting. Happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Just like to thank Rusty for all of his research and hard work on this as well. Thanks, Rusty, we appreciate it. We're lucky to have you, sir. Any, any questions for Paul? Thank you, Paul, appreciate it. And finance, Travis?
All right, thank you very much. So Molly obviously covered the current year financials. Just to run down real quick, so people, the public can hear, in our capital reserve, we currently have $262,442. In the special education trust fund, we have $531,614. And in the maintenance trust fund, we have $527,722. And the turf has $105 to keep it open. So Helen, I know you had mentioned earlier, I think in the public hearing, we'll make some determinations about putting trust fund warrants on the ballot, what dollar figures, we want to do that sort of thing. So that discussion will take place here in the next few weeks.
Right.
Couple of the things that we discussed in finance, so we already covered the school lunch that Bob wanted to discuss, so thank you, Bob, for bringing that up. The other item that Molly, at a minimum, wanted to bring to our attention is the bad debt for food service, which has grown exponentially this year. Typically, and Molly, correct me if I'm wrong, we typically budget about $5,000 to offset bad debt at both CMS, at EHS combined. Currently, we have bad debt of $9,811.15.
Wow.
And we're only halfway through the year. The reasons for that, yeah, Bob?
Explain the word "bad debt" for the public.
Yep, absolutely. So essentially, people, your students buy their lunches, but they have a zero balance on their account. It's, what's it called again? Titan is the system that's used for that. So the parents have to log on, create their accounts, put money onto the students' accounts. They can set up recurring. If it gets to $20, another 50 automatically hits it. They can set all those types of things up. If a student's account has $0, and they go up to get lunch, they do get lunch to go through the line once. They're told at that time that they have no balance on their account, and they need to put some monies into that account, you know, for the next day, whether that happens or not. So we do feed them once. In the, in years past, and Helen, you may know, and Dr. Ryan, you may have heard similar things, there have been things tried where they get a peanut butter sandwich as opposed to the regular lunch and things like that. It was very, I almost want to say discriminatory, like it wasn't, they singled out those students very dramatically, and we really didn't like that. So I don't know when that was done away with, but that doesn't happen anymore. They get the same lunch as everybody else. So that takes place. Those students then are not allowed to come back through the line a second time. I guess students can go through the line two or three times, Sawyer, you probably know better than anybody. So if students have, are that hungry, they can go through a second time if they have money on their account. But if you don't, you get lunch once. Some efforts that have been made to kind of offset, not the bad debt, but to offset the situation for those students. Every cafeteria has what are called share bins. So if a student doesn't want their apple, doesn't want their orange, their bag of chips, not prepared food per se, but things like that, they can put it in the share bin, and that's available to any student that wants to grab an apple or an orange on their, on their way to class, or whatever the case may be. Families are, that have this bad debt on their accounts are being notified, emailed twice a week by the system that we use, by Titan, not by any of our administrators. It's the system itself that does that. The administrators and guidance have tried to help identify some of those students, to try to offer assistance and help them in any way that they can. And the food service director is planning on sending out physical letters home after the holidays to parents, again, informing them of the debt that they owe on the food service account. So we could, at the will of the board, choose to try to do some things about this. I guess in the past, there have been, again, way back probably, but there have been attempts to, if you have bad debt, you lose your parking privileges, or things of that nature. Again, discriminates against some students, creates another issue that parents need to deal with now, how do I get my student to and from school, if there are things like that? So, you know, those things have been tried in the past by either us or other districts, not very successfully is my understanding. So we don't have to take any action tonight, but Molly, at a minimum, wanted this group to know that we had essentially already doubled our food service bad debt in half the year, so we expect it to be closer to $20,000 at the end of the academic year. So until I continue, I'll turn it over to you, Helen, if we want a discussion on this.
Thank you, sure. I guess I have a question, maybe, I don't know if you can answer this, Molly. The students who are not keeping their accounts up, I don't know how you ascertain this. Are some of these students, or many of these students, from families that could be applying for free or reduced lunch, but are just hesitant to do so because of the stigma to that? Or any thoughts on that?
I don't know for sure. I did talk to the Director of Food Service about it, and the, between the Director of Food Service and the administration have made efforts to really, really help those in need.
Sure.
And it's, it's more of a feeling that it, those can pay for it.
I see.
And I just wanted to add two things, or clarify two things for Travis. What Travis was talking about is, when he said once, it's once per day. So it's, it's, and then also, just so you know, that that $9,800 is across 175 students. So it's 175 students with zero balances that have...
Negative accounts.
Negative accounts.
Yes, Paul, and then Scott?
Yeah, I like the idea of physical letters going out.
Yep.
Maybe if, if we're not seeing improvement after that, maybe phone calls can be made, just because not everybody checks their email necessarily at the same rate. If, if, I don't know what the emails look like coming from the system, but if they look like kind of roboemails, maybe people are skipping over them, they could be going to spam. So I, you know, certainly don't want to do anything to penalize these students.
Sure.
But I, I do want to make sure we're making full effort to get these paid, because these, for some of these, they might just be parents who are still unaware.
Well, Paul, if I could, to that very point?
Yeah.
Helen, if that's okay?
Sure.
One of the things that Bill, Molly, and I talked about as well is potentially, and we have no facts to back this up, but if a student was a freshman two years ago, they didn't have to do this. Yep, this student then was a sophomore, they didn't have to do this.
That's true.
We've got juniors right now, that their parents may have never had to pay anything for lunch. They don't even know...
Right.
They were supposed to sign up. I mean, I'm sure the school sent information out to do that, but again, we're all parents, we know how busy things get, and what you miss sometimes. So there could be an awful lot of families that didn't even know why they had to do that, it just, I've never had to pay for school lunch.
Good point.
So, just to that point. All right, Scott?
Yeah, no, that was, I was going to say, it, I don't know if Titan, the Titan system has the ability to note, like, to new, like, a read rate, like, when an email goes out, has it been read?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And that was, my other thing was, like, they may not, like, is there a way also for you to dig into the data to see if these are accounts that had money and now don't have money? Because I know you can add, you know what I mean, or, to your point, are they, are they just, they just don't know?
Right.
And they're, they're thinking, hey, I've, my son's gotten free lunch for, because of COVID for the past few years, and now...
That's a good point.
I don't know. I, yeah, it's, it's a slippery...
Bob?
Yeah, I just would, just the fact that the board's raising the concern of, you know, $9,811.15 owed this school year. I mean, that's a lot of money.
Right, absolutely.
And I think if parents can get on the ball and make sure their accounts are up to date.
Well, I think my recommendation would be, just a recommendation, not to take any action tonight. I would leave it at this point to our administration and to Molly to work with Jean and see what happens. I love the idea of the letters going out, too, physical letters, and maybe report back to us after a period of time, and not necessarily in January, because it's coming up pretty quickly, but maybe in February to see if there's been any improvement as a result of that. And then we may have to make some decisions, so...
Yeah, Jean strategically is going to send the letters after the holidays, so it doesn't get mixed in the holiday shuffle.
Yeah, we don't want any, thinking it's Christmas cards and open up with the bill, but, you know, yeah, there you go. Any, anybody else have any suggestions or concerns, anything?
Coming out of finance, Bill, and I, I mean, we weren't advocating any action or anything like that.
Right, right, thank you.
Wanted the board to be aware, and that was Molly's intent as well.
Okay.
So one last thing, that, just to put it on the table again, and I believe we saw emails from our colleague, Kim Meyer, about the communications audit for the co-op. I think in some of that conversation, the opportunity, again, at public hearing, may be there, I think, Helen, you had mentioned something about that. So again, something that we at least wanted to put on the table from a financial perspective, it could be a worthwhile expense, but again, you know, Kim was, was pretty adamant that we at least needed some budget dollars in there to be able to accomplish this. Given that, I think it was upwards of $5,000 to $7,000 for the co-op, not for the SAU.
Right.
We also certainly have the flexibility in the current budget we're in. We know that we're going to have surplus, that we could certainly do that project in the second semester of this academic year, if the board chose us to do that, and just expend the $5,000 to $7,000 out of this current budget.
And I believe Kim only sent that proposal to the finance committee, so I will ask her to send it to the entire board for our consideration in terms of whether or not, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor, I really do, in terms of doing a, a needs assessment for the co-op and the buildings in the co-op with regard to communication, because it is an area of concern for many in the community. So we could perhaps leave that for some discussion, whether that be for the hearing, and see whether or not it's the will of this board to increase the budget for next year by that amount of money, or entertain the idea of possibly doing it this year, and if the money is in our current budget, to be able to do that. That's something that we can talk more about at our January hearing, if that works for everybody. Okay, great, all right, thank you. I'm going to, Molly, I'm sure, and Rusty would like to perhaps head out, if you'd like to. Great, thank you so much, and happy holidays to you. I'm opening the last 10 minutes of public input at this point, if anybody would like to speak. Okay?
Liz Freya Brentwood, I'm going to go backwards. I was just curious why you didn't bring up the bad debt for the food service before you voted on the paying off more of the food service. I'm just curious.
Oh, I was just following the order of the agenda, no, no reason whatsoever.
Okay, because it seemed like so related, I was surprised, since I didn't hear anything, since I was in the finance meeting for that particular issue. I'm not quite sure what the communications audit is, like, could you explain a little bit about that?
Well, my understanding, we're just getting this initial information now, but it's, it's an audit with regard to where the strengths and weaknesses are with regard to communications in the district. It would be, it would entail surveying parents, teachers, administration, doing both, an audit with regard to internal communication as well as communication within the community.
Okay.
And recommendations would be made by this group that's doing this audit in terms of where we need to place our emphasis with regard to, to that particular topic.
Well, I know one huge weakness, it always goes to parents and students and staff. One huge weakness is the rest of the community.
Sure.
Something like 75 or 80% who don't have children in the school. So that's a huge, huge miss.
That's a good point, yeah, absolutely.
I don't think you need to spend $7,000 to find, figure that out. But I don't know how you would get to them, but I'm just saying...
Sure.
That's a huge miss. Travis, what was the first finance committee, 262 was for which?
Are you talking the trust funds, Liz?
Yes.
Yeah, give me one second. Scroll back down. So the capital reserve?
Oh, capital reserve, okay.
$262,442.
$442. I just couldn't remember the, I didn't write fast enough.
Yep.
The, also, you said the Tuck Learning Campus, you have a committee? Who's on the committee for that?
It's, it's not a committee, it's an advisory group. From the board, it's Bob and myself. Mr. Lister and Dr. Ryan are both there. And then we have various representatives, and Dr. Ryan may need to help me out here, but we have some folks from Harriman Architecture Firm. We have some, a gentleman that works in the real estate field in Exeter. We have Russ Dean, Town Manager for Exeter.
Roy Morissette.
And Roy.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Roy Morissette as well. Am I missing anybody?
We had Meridian Construction providing consultation on any construction issues, and... We had Meridian Construction providing consultation on any construction issues and Dick Wendell, yes, Facilities Director, emeritus.
I know him well. Okay, so do we have asbestos in that building?
In the old Tuck building?
Anywhere in the Tuck?
I believe any of that has been removed.
I think that was removed.
I believe it has been removed.
Okay, I had a question for Molly, too, but she's gone.
Okay, you have three minutes, Liz, but I'll allow you to ask a couple more questions if you have.
Yeah, okay. Molly, I'll ask later. Why are we signing up in the Exeter Town Clerk's office and not in our own town's Town Clerk?
Well, I'm going to let Dr. Ryan answer that.
Just for the co-op, co-op's historically been at the SAU office.
Yeah, I know.
And so we moved that to the town office, and that currently is where it resides. The Attorney General received our plan, and the Attorney General's Office approved it, so that's the only reason.
Okay. How many students do we currently have in the Blue Hawk House?
I don't have that number. I don't know if Mr. Ryan could tell us specifically.
Okay. Oh, that's easy to find out, right. And didn't we already replace the turf at the field?
We did.
So it's just a matter of returning that money to the something?
Correct. We're going to talk about
We're not going to start doing the turf again?
No, 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 nothing like that.
We're not going to stay up for another five years?
Helen, we might, we might start accruing funds again.
Correct.
Like we had been doing $50,000 a year out of
Yeah, yeah, but it still came out to way more.
But it'll still take years to build that one, yeah.
Liz, I'm going to have to give you one more minute.
That's good. Champions for Children, are we still doing that?
I'm sorry?
Champions for Children. Do we still do that?
We do. We had, actually, Bill was our Bill Perkins was our Champions for Children nominee.
So when is the next time that can be, somebody can
Next year. It would have to be the coming year.
Okay. And I certainly hope that you put the picture of the charcuterie board and the brand on the website. Full, or not full of charcuterie, but when, you know, like when they've eaten the charcuterie, I'd like to see what the board looks like.
SST has control over their web page.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be great. And I think that's, oh, one final plus is I was thrilled that Mr. Monahan talked about academic and art highlights as opposed to sports highlights. It's really nice when we recognize academics
Absolutely.
also.
Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you, Liz. We appreciate your input. I just have a couple of things that I wanted to point out, and then we're going to be adjourned. Well, 8:30 would be the end of our 10-minute public input. I just wanted to point out there's some slight changes to the January and February meetings that normally you might miss. If you look at future meeting dates, Tuesday, January 3rd, P P and C and Curriculum will be meeting that night at the SAU office at the Mike Morgan Center. Because vacation is, you know, that's something that probably, I don't know, if Dr. Ryan would be able to connect with Kim and with Bill in terms of a possible agenda for that evening.
Sure we can. I'm working next week, so.
You are. All right, that would be great. Just because of the fact that it's like we come back and bam, we have a meeting.
It's a great way to start the new year.
There you go. Okay. So our public hearing and board meeting is not two weeks later, it's the following Tuesday. I just wanted to point that out to you. I think some people will be thinking, oh, two weeks away. By law, we have to have that within a certain period of time prior to the deliberative session. So the public hearing and board meeting will be in this room at 6 o'clock. I'm going to recommend that as soon as the hearing is over, we begin the board meeting rather than wait till 7 o'clock. If anybody has any problem with that, are we good with that? Our deliberative session is going to be on Sunday, February 5th, at 2 o'clock in the afternoon in the Exeter High School Auditorium. And because the deliberative session takes the place of our regular board meeting, we will only have on Tuesday, February 21st, since Finance and Facilities will not have met. We've got this on the schedule for now. If, as we get closer to that, David and I and Paul and Travis can talk. If there's not a number of agenda items, we may cancel that meeting, but for now, we wanted to leave it on there just in case something should come up. And then on Tuesday, March 21st, we will be having our school board organizational meeting. No committees that month because we have to organize the committees after the election. Okay, so just wanted to point that out to you. It's a little bit of a change, and then we get back into regular schedule in April. All right. Hi, how are you?
Jane from Newfield.
Hi, Jane.
I just have a quick question on the deliberative session.
Yes.
With sports and everything else going on, I wasn't sure if you guys would consider making that just a little bit later in the day. I know it's a Sunday, so hopefully we don't have anybody working, which is awesome, so thank you. But with, like, different sports and different things going on, it would be great if it was just a little bit later in the day.
That would have to be determined by our moderator, Kate Miller. I believe, because that's been said already. I don't know if we can change that at this time.
You could reach out to Kate Miller. She's the one that actually sets the date and the time.
The board doesn't set that.
Both the town and the board.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome. All right.
It was last year.
It was last year on a Sunday. Yes, it was. Uh huh. All right. Any further for the good of the order?
We have to talk about Gbex.
Oh, gosh, Bob, I'm so sorry. I've got you right on here. Absolutely. My apologies. Okay, thank you.
Last week, Dr. Ryan and I had the opportunity to go next door and visit Gbex. And this is my second year in a row that I've attended. It was a brunch. And I must say, it was, it's just a wonderful experience. We, to begin with, Cheryl McDonough and Peter Stackhouse spoke about the program and how it's going. And it's a few less students this year, but the overall, you know, I'm just amazed at what happens there. I mean, it truly is a family. The students, by the way, the students took us on the tour of the building and really knew the classes, knew the teachers, really felt at home there. And likewise, last year, I paid really good attention to the students. This year, I was faculty-focused, and they love the students. They absolutely do. They really do. And, you know, we all learn differently. It's a great example of how some students who this wonderful school just is too big for need a different environment. And it's that environment that turns them on, gets them going. It's really a wonderful experience. I encourage other board members to go, you know, sit in on what happens there. You're always welcome in public, you know. Just, and Dr. Ryan, would you like to add anything?
I just, it was great to walk around and get to see. I was with some, we were with colleagues from Oyster River
Yes, that's what I wanted to point out.
and Timberlake.
Yes, three other districts were represented that day, which was great. And apparently, they were, Cheryl called me, and they were equally impressed with everything. So I think that's a good sign that these other districts are sending representatives to see what's going on there, and hopefully it will result in some
Exeter counts for just under 50% of the population in the school.
Right, right.
And, but students there come from Dover, Durham, all the way to Manchester, over to Portsmouth area, and down to Timberlake, down to Plastow.
Right, right.
So it covers quite an area. So it really, it fills a wonderful void. It really does.
And I want to thank publicly Dr. Ryan for the wonderful letter that he composed that was sent to these other superintendents. It was really well done, David. Thank you so much for doing that. And hopefully, it will result in some more funds coming from other districts to help with the budgeting there. All right. Thanks, Bob. I'm calling you. I've been away for a while. Okay, public input has closed, and unless there's something else for this evening, yes?
I just have one small
Yes, sir.
small thing.
Absolutely.
As we were going through the reports, it reminded me of a conversation that I did have with a couple of people. When the notification went out for the Alma with the Oregon number,
Yes.
I got several inquiries about it.
What did I?
I'm sure you did. Is there, and just from my knowledge, and just so I can follow up with the people that did contact me, is there a way to get a local 603 number versus an Oregon number? Or a way for the caller ID to say Exeter High School or something? I know from my fact, I had my cellphone and my home number, and it came up as like spam, and I didn't think anything of it. So I just wanted to raise that as a
That was a conversation that we had with Alma last Tuesday.
Okay.
Our time, we ran out, and our list is long.
Yeah.
So that was priority number one after that alert went out. In my update this week, that'll be sent out either late Thursday afternoon or Friday, it's going to address the seven phone numbers with Portland, Oregon area codes. And just help, we just want to acknowledge, we know this is what happened.
Yeah.
Here's how we're trying to remedy it. It's with Alma and their phone service. So what we did as a stopgap was we reloaded School Messenger, where we were using, which is what we used all through COVID, which seems to work pretty well. So we've reloaded and updated all of the contact information in School Messenger. So in the event that anything is to occur between now and the time we can get that resolved, it'll be School Messenger, which has an Exeter phone number attached to it. And so we'll explain that in the update as well. That doesn't mean that Alma's off the hook.
Right.
One of the key components of that contract is to provide an emergency alert system that we can use with confidence. Presently, we're not there. So that is among several other items on the list with Alma.
Okay.
No, I'm glad you asked.
Cool. Yeah, no, I had a couple of people reach out to me, and we're like, like I had the same issue.
That's great that you're answering your constituents' needs. Thank you, Scott. We appreciate that. All right. Anything else? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:35. Not too bad, not too shabby tonight, okay? Do we have a motion? Travis, thank you. Second? Thank you, all in favor? Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you so much.